Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisor meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and your address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, you will unmute your microphone, and after speaking, we ask that you please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period. All comments should be directed to the board. And I now ask that you join me in our first agenda item and please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up first, we have our consent agenda. Consent agenda are routine items, which typically require very little debate or discussion. On the consent agenda, are there any comments from the board or any questions?
Yes, I'd like to comment that once a month, we have detailed reports from all the staff we have across the township, and I want to recognize their efforts because they're very successful.
There's also a storage building on the property. The storage building existed at the time that we did the Ducklings Land Development Plan. It still exists today. Historically, it's been used by Oak Tree for storage of their materials. They're proposing to convert that storage building for use by a contractor. Basically, there will be some limited office space, a mezzanine office space installed within the building, which has a footprint of 2,800 square feet. All said, the leased area in the building will be 5,000 square feet when that mezzanine is installed. It'll primarily be used for storage of equipment and materials by the contractor. There will be some ancillary office spaces, but it will not be a place where the contractor would meet with clients. Those meetings would occur on-site. We are seeking a waiver of land development because there's no real land planning that is part of this project. It's really an interior conversion of the building. The township staff, however, did ask for a few items in order for us to make the presentation to the board requesting the waiver. One thing that they asked us to look at was the project from a zoning perspective. This is a permitted use in the CBC zone where the property is located. We did take a look at parking needs for the use, specifically in reference to the I T E's parking generation manual. There's currently seven spaces on the property. We found two additional spaces would need to be installed to comply with the I T E, so we are proposing to install those. That's really the only site improvement that will be occurring in connection with this project, and that's only going to result in an additional 561 square feet of impervious coverage. We also have undertaken paving of the existing gravel driveway and parking spaces that are located on the property. The township also asked for some documentation from our traffic engineer and from our civil engineer, which is for two associates, relative to the project, again, in order to submit the request for a waiver of land development. Specifically, the township requested documentation from Route Two that the additional 561 square feet of impervious coverage could be accommodated in the stormwater system that's been designed for the Ducklings Daycare Center and the property. It can be. There was excess capacity within those stormwater facilities when they were constructed for Ducklings, and there is a letter dated November 8th, 2023, which is attached to my November 9th letter to the township, to that effect, from Route Two. They also requested documentation from Traffic Planning and Design, Traffic Engineer for the project, that the proposed trip generation could be accommodated on the existing minimum-use driveway that serves the storage building, which goes onto the state road system on Harrisburg Pike. And Traffic Planning and Design also provided a letter to that effect dated November 9th. So we're here this evening seeking a waiver of land development from the board so that we can proceed with making the interior modifications to the building and installing the two additional parking spaces for the new tenant. Happy to answer any questions the board has.
I have none. Ms. LaFevere? Mr. Bennett?
The only question I have is about the trip generation summary. With six employees, and I read in the documentation that there's not going to be any retail people coming, really, people coming and going.
Correct.
Do we really need to require two additional parking spaces and the additional impervious?
That was something that we talked about when we did the parking analysis, and we felt that that was a worthwhile improvement. There also is not a handicap parking space currently, so this will allow us to put a handicap parking space on the site. So appreciate the comment, but we do think it makes sense to make that improvement.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm good.
Ms. Russell?
No, I'm good at this point.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. Any from Zoom? Okay. All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to grant 3101 Yellow Goose Road a waiver of land development?
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, 283 Commerce Hub Final Plan.
Hey there, folks. How we doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. So I was here back in, I believe it was March, we got the conditional approval for the plan. Since then, we've been working through the remaining comments with the township engineer and also working through our H O P for the improvements along Spooky Nook Road and as well as South Chickies and the interchange or the intersection there. As such, we had four additional waivers come up that we're here to request tonight. The first two relate to parking, sorry, not parking, but widening curbing and sidewalk. We do propose curbing and sidewalk along South Chickies. PennDOT has requested we not install curbing or sidewalk along Spooky Nook Road. That is the first two waivers, the sidewalk and the curbing, so more of a partial waiver than a full. The third waiver we were here to request is implementation of a type C buffer. We do plan to enhance the existing vegetation out there, and we provided an additional evaluation of the existing vegetation to the township engineer. And our goal is to maintain what is out there rather than clear-cut everything and then plant new trees. Didn't make a lot of sense to us, nor did I think it made sense to your engineer, so here to ask a waiver for that with the expectation that we do enhance what is existing out there today. The last waiver related to the location of our driveway, our western driveway access, which is primarily for automobiles and emergency access. During the review process and designing of our walls, we found it very difficult to design the walls we originally had on our plan and make them cost-efficient. As such, we moved our driveway about 50 feet to the east, and doing so reduces our wall heights. It makes shallower grades for emergency vehicles to traverse this entrance. But we did maintain the required landscape buffer along the nearby residence as, you know, an objective of moving this driveway. But happy to answer any questions about the four waivers, and I believe we may have some plans still if there's anything specific.
I have none. Ms. LaFevere?
Would your landscape enhancement include some trees?
Yes.
A number?
I don't have the number in front of me. I know it was very significant, I believe over 100, but again, I don't have the number.
Thank you.
Yep.
As long as the buffering gets done and meets township approval, I'm fine with this.
Yep.
Ms. Russell?
I'm in support of all four waivers. I just would make a recommendation that for waiver number one, so that we're consistent with all the other sidewalk waivers we've issued in the past, it should be a deferral, not a flat-out waiver. I have no doubt sidewalk will probably never be installed there, but we do have a kind of a precedent about not waiving sidewalk in the township. So would Mr. Chairman make a recommendation that we modify that waiver to a deferral?
Good. Is the rest of the board good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the applicant good with that?
Yes.
Okay. We'll open it up to the audience. Are there any questions concerning this project? Any comments? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve modifications three and four? Conditionally approved modification two on the DMA review letter dated November 2nd, 2023, subject to all staff and engineering comments, and then we'll make a second motion for item one.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFevere. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And then motion to approve modification number one with the change of a waiver to a deferral for the sidewalk and curb. Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFevere. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the U-Haul Project Revised Final Plan.
Good evening. Me again. Here this evening on behalf of U-Haul with regard to a revised final plan that they have submitted for the property they're currently developing along Route 283. So by way of background, you very recently approved a plan for this site along with some waiver and modification requests. We were in the process of mobilizing for construction on the site when we discovered that there was an existing P P N L right-of-way that impacted the property, which was not picked up on the survey. So essentially, the plan was designed without consideration of this existing right-of-way. Fortunately for us, the impacts on the plan were fairly minimal. There is a small portion of the project that is within P P N L's right-of-way. If you look up on the screen. I can find the on switch on the side. There we go. The right-of-way is down here, bottom corner of the property. There is a small parking, really it's a vehicle display area that falls within the right-of-way. Originally, there was a little corner of the building that cut partially into the right-of-way as well. We had some preliminary discussions with P P N L about this. It was indicated to us that the parking area would likely be acceptable or the pavement area, but the building could not be placed within the right-of-way. So we worked quickly to make some revisions to the plan to completely remove the building from the right-of-way. We are still showing, again, that parking vehicle storage area in the right-of-way. We've had some preliminary discussions with P P N L. We've submitted plans and are in the process of securing an encroachment agreement with them to allow for that pavement to be located there. However, we submitted the revised plans. Your township engineer has reviewed them twice now. We were at the Planning Commission last week, which recommended approval of our revised plan. Just before the meeting this evening, we did receive a clean letter from DMA indicating that there are no outstanding issues with the amended plan. Financial security has already been posted. There are no additional waivers or modifications that are necessary as a result of this change. Obviously, we're fine with approval of the plan being conditioned upon receipt of an encroachment agreement from P P N L allowing for the improvements in the right-of-way that we're currently showing. So we're here this evening asking for your approval of the amended plan so that we can proceed.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions from the board?
None here.
None?
Nope.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this plan? Okay. None from Zoom? Then is there a motion to approve the revised final land development plan for U-Haul Township File 2215.03, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have 2532 Marietta Avenue Final Plan.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mike Hucksta with ELA Group, and with me tonight is the property owner and applicant, Don Herman. He'll help answer any questions that might come up. You may remember that we had this tract rezoned about a year and a half ago, and it was successfully rezoned to medium-density residential. And at that time, we submitted a sketch plan of what could possibly be on the property. So we took that sketch and then developed a, we submitted a formal sketch plan in the spring, so we presented that. So we've developed that plan again and submitted our final land development plan based on those two sketches. The property's 4.7 acres, and as you can see, it's between Marietta Avenue and Route 30. There's one existing residence on the property and an existing garage, and they have an existing access drive to Marietta Avenue. And they will remain and be parceled off into a separate lot. That's about three-quarters of an acre. What we're proposing is, you can see here, is a single access drive that's right across from Pin Oak Drive, and that goes down to the private street. And when we met with you guys earlier, you requested that we do a secondary emergency access. So we have a connection from the existing driveway to the private street. So it's going to be a grass area that has stabilized paving underneath it, so it can accommodate an 80,000-pound fire truck. So in an emergency, if the main access drive is closed, the secondary access will be able to be used. On the private street, we have turnarounds on both ends, and it was requested by the township engineer that we sign that so there could be no parking there. So we weren't planning to have parking in those turnaround areas, but we also signed it so it wouldn't be, somebody wouldn't accidentally park there and not know they couldn't park there. But we are planning to have additional on-street parking. It's not required. We will be providing enough room in the driveways to provide two cars, and they will also have garages that you can park cars in. So that would accommodate the new residents, but for any visitors, the applicant thought it would be a good amenity to add additional parking on the street, so we provided that. As you can see here, we have two townhouse buildings. They have six units each, and at the right cul-de-sac, you can see that we have a building with two semi-detached units, for a total of 14 new units. What we're allowed here is four dwelling units per acre, and this lot will have 3.5 dwelling units per acre. If you go to the next plan, please, the grading plan, with all the grading on the site, there's steep slopes between Marietta Avenue and the private street and the stormwater management controls. We won't be able to provide any additional housing on here. It would be developed as much as possible. The stormwater management facilities are closer to Route 30 down in the low-lying areas. We have buffer landscape planting, and that's something that wasn't required by the plan for the residential, but the applicant wanted to have that additional screening between Route 30 and the development. We're providing street trees and street lighting. The site will be maintained by a homeowners association, and it will be served with public sewer and water. When we looked at the traffic for this site, the 15 total units that are shown here will generate approximately 64 average daily trips, three in the AM peak hour and three in the PM peak hour. So for this area on Marietta Avenue, it's not increasing traffic significantly at all. We have had three reviews by the township engineer, and we took care of all the site plan and stormwater comments. So now we're just waiting on the outside reviews from the sewer, water, PennDOT, and D E P for the MPDS Earth Disturbance Permit. Tonight, along with the plan approval, we're looking for modifications of four land development ordinance requirements and three stormwater management requirements. This time, are there any questions?
Is there an intention to dedicate your street to East Hemphill Township?
No, it will remain private and maintained by the homeowners association.
Thank you.
Any questions so far, Mr. Bennett?
No, it's a tough piece of property, I think, but something to utilize it, and I think this is a pretty creative approach to a tough piece of property, really. So I like what I see.
Mr. Weaver?
Hemphill Development.
Ms. Russell?
No comments.
We're good. I think so.
Would you like me to talk about the modifications or?
If you could just highlight them.
Yeah, so the first one that we're looking for is the beauty strip between the sidewalk and on-street parking. On the side where the residences are, we are providing that beauty strip. It's three feet, seven inches wide. But where we're having the on-street parking, we'd like to have the sidewalk right up against the curb, so when people step out of their car, they'll step onto the sidewalk. And with this existing garage, if we had that additional three feet, seven inches, we would not be able to provide the five-foot setback to the property line. So it wouldn't work with that, so we feel that it's better to have the on-street parking and not the beauty strip. It's also better, like, in inclement weather to have somebody step onto the sidewalk, so in this condition, because it is a private street, we feel that that would be acceptable. The next one is the curb sidewalk and pavement widening on Marietta Avenue. So we're requesting this modification as a deferral, and in the future, if there is a consolidated project with PennDOT approval, the property owner at that time will pay for those improvements.
And would that be the HOA?
Yes, it will be. And the next one is environmental impact study. So this section of the ordinance requires a lot of different studies, and we are providing most of them, such as a traffic study, the geotechnical investigation, the wetland study. They were all completed. But what we don't, we're asking for the modification for is for the environmental study, because this is going to be a residential project. It's not manufacturing. There will be no chemicals, harmful compounds, pollutions, or discharge of hazardous materials coming from this site. The next one is sidewalks on both sides of the street. As you can see on our plan, we're providing a sidewalk on the west side of the access drive. And this will allow access to anybody that wants to cross over to Pin Oak, pedestrians walking on Marietta Avenue. It will direct them into the site where we have crosswalks and the full sidewalk system. And then the three stormwater comments. This site isn't able to infiltrate the way D E P would like it to, so we're following a different stormwater methodology that is permitted by D E P. And with that, we're going to have an issue with the volume control storage, so we're asking for a modification of that because we cannot infiltrate. The bottom slope of the basin is going to be flat, and it will go into a BMP that will clean the water before it's discharged. And the swale design modification that we're requesting is to have three-to-one slopes instead of four-to-one slopes. The swales are only two feet deep, and they're about five feet wide, so it's not going to be a significant impact to the design of the swales. And that's everything.
Any questions on the waivers and modifications?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
None.
Mr. Russell? Are there any comments, questions from the audience in reference to this project? Any from Zoom? All right. Hearing none, then is there a motion to approve for 2532 Marietta Avenue? Is there a motion to approve modification requests two through seven and conditional approval of number one on the DMA review letter dated October 20th, 2023, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
There's a motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the final land development plan for 2532 Marietta Avenue, Township File 23-04.02, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Weaver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time tonight.
Police Pension Plan Amendment?
We have the Meadows.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I missed that.
Okay.
The Meadow Garden. Sorry, did not.
Thanks. Good evening. Steve Gergli with Harbor Engineering, here with Rob Fisher, Grace Book, and Chantel Wenger. This is a sketch plan for 543 Champ Boulevard. This property is at the northwest corner of the intersection of 283 and Spooky Nook Road. Currently contains the Comfort Suites Hotel, which is an 80-room hotel, and a farmhouse and some outbuildings and barns, which were recently used for the Chestnut Villa, Chestnut Hill Villa wedding event venue, which has since been discontinued. Currently, Mr. Fisher and his family occupy the farmhouse as their residence. And this is a sketch plan for a proposed small garden store. Roar Seeds is proposing to construct a small building and a couple of greenhouses to be called the Meadow Garden Mercantile. And it'll sell plants, garden supplies, garden accessories on a seasonal basis. It'll utilize the existing parking lot that's associated with the hotel. The parking lot was overbuilt for the hotel. There was overflow parking spaces that were designed as part of the original land development that had been put in. Also, the detention basins on the site for stormwater were also oversized at the time that we processed the land development plan. So the small amount of impervious surface associated with these buildings will be able to be accommodated in the stormwater basins, and we'll document that further during the land development process. So we are asking for a, we submitted a sketch plan, and we're asking for a waiver of preliminary plan requirements, which was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission last week. So with that, we're here to answer any questions that you would have.
Ms. LaFevere?
I have none of questions.
Mr. Weaver?
No.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Any from the audience? Okay. Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary plan waiver request for the Meadow Garden Mercantile at 543 Champ Boulevard, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. LaFevere, second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we're on to the police pension plan amendment.
So we settled the police contract. I believe we authorized that in August of this year. And part of the agreement was a change to the pension plan for the police department. And to do that, we were required to do an ordinance. So I'm looking for your authorization to advertise for that ordinance. It includes a revised definition for salary and a provision for early retirement at 20 years.
Is there any questions or comments in regards to this change?
Not.
Mr. Russell?
It's just an advertisement, so no.
Nothing. Okay. Right. Any questions or comments from the audience in regards to this? Do you need a motion on our behalf?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize uh staff to advertise the change?
On the back of your sheet. Sorry. Uh-oh. Here, have mine.
Is there a motion to authorize um staff advertising in an ordinance to amend the police pension plan?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Her Park Phase Two?
So the Amish her phase, Amish her park Phase Two consists of uh a new pavilion, a new bocce court, some parking areas and a driveway and some rain gardens for stormwater. We bid this project twice. It is significantly over budget. We do have a DCNR grant of a hundred and fifty-two thousand. But that's not going to be anywhere near what we need to cover it. We are short about four hundred and forty-three thousand. So the board supervisors' last meeting challenged us to go find solutions. There are two possible solutions in grant funding. One of those is coming due for submittal on November thirtieth. It's a DCED grant uh called local share count. And what I'm looking for is a resolution to authorize submission of that grant and to authorize signature on that paperwork. This one is a no-match, by the way.
Great. Any um, I mean, I think it's great. It's outstanding and I'm very hopeful. So it would go a long way to Solvenor.
Hopefully. We should hear sometime in the spring.
Any other comments or?
No. Cindy did what we asked her to do, so thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board on this or from the audience on this? Okay, Zoom. Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three authorizing submitting a grant application for funding through the local share assessment, DCED funding for the Aher Park Phase Two project?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. LaFever?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Up next, um, we have a, I guess, a little sad item to take up. We have a uh board of supervisor resignation. Um, Mr. Weaver will be uh moving out of our area. Um, and has submitted his resignation letter. And looking at the um statute and the requirements, I'm going to ask that we uh table that and and acknowledge this resignation at our next meeting. Once we acknowledge it, we have thirty days to take action. Um, and if we do that now with the Thanksgiving Day holiday, that puts us at having to appoint a supervisor at our very next meeting. Because our second meeting in December is outside of that thirty days. So that would be my request is that we um table this, formally accept the resignation letter at our first meeting in December. In the meantime, we can have staff authorize for interested parties to submit resumes to the township. And with that, we can, if anybody has any other comments or questions, we can discuss it.
That's unfortunate, Andy. So did a great service to township.
Very welcome. It's been an honor and a privilege.
Like to publicly thank Andy for the, not only the the years here and the for the, as the board supervisors, but for the uh time spent on the planning commission, which uh was what, ten or twelve years?
I lost track.
Ten or twelve years. So uh, again, uh, thank you and uh good luck in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, I think I expressed this to you before. I've always found your presence on our board to be a calming one um and one that will be be missed.
Thank you.
One thought, have we done uh investigation to know that we may solicit applications before we accept the resignation?
I did not make that inquiry specifically.
I believe it would be appropriate. Um, it seems logical and um still puts it into next year. And uh just think that's a point that could present an issue later.
Well, I don't think it's going to go into next year. I think if we accept it at the first meeting, we only have thirty days to act on it.
But there's a time needed for interviews, submission and interviews.
There's only a thirty-day window. It's letter law, letter of the law.
Well, there is a fifteen carryover when necessary, but nonetheless, I just think we should dot i's and cross t's, so.
I'm quite okay with checking with the solicitor, making sure that you know, we're authorized to solicit resumes. And if we do that, I I would like to see a deadline on that of.
Thank you. And thank you, Andy.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'd say deadline on that of December eighth. If we're allowed to advertise ahead of time. Old business. We have the truck study. Sure.
I'll make a motion to table acceptance or any action on Andy's resignation at this time.
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, second for Mr. Russell to table action on Mr. Weaver's resignation letter. Motion for Mr. Bennett, second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have the um truck study, further review and discussion. Um, we've talked about this now uh for several meetings. Um, is there anything else to add to the discussion or any changes that anybody on the board wants to see made?
I want to acknowledge that the truck study added what I hope will be and believe should be uh a facilitator of getting the truck traffic where we wish it to go. And that is simply the arrows along with the um signage revising of um restrictions. So I think that was a good thing. Um, there are more areas in the township that I believe would warrant having a truck study to try and help trucks know um the best way to navigate our township. So um, this study, I think, has done a job that was commissioned to do. And uh, I do acknowledge the arrows, which hopefully will help matters.
I think it was a, at the last meeting, the people that were most concerned seemed satisfied at the end. And there's not many people in the audience, so I think we kind of hit the objective by addressing the issue.
Any other comments?
How quickly will we implement this? Do we have an id, do we have any idea?
If we pass it tonight?
The intent was to pass it on the sixth, which is what we've been advertising.
Oh, I'm sorry, the sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, in terms of implement implementation, we would be looking at signage, which would probably be better suited for the spring placement because of the winter and the and the freezing of ground. So we'll we'll get everything started and and get it ready so that we can put it in the ground as of um.
There's a PennDOT component too, so.
Yes, yes.
That could be anytime. Not, so it could be summertime next year, it could be whenever they get to it.
Positive.
But no, I just want to set the expectations as not just the township staff putting signs out there, but the signs along two eighty-three are going to have to have PennDOT's approval and that's going to take a couple months, once we authorize a study.
I thought we were going to approve it at this meeting. No?
That's how we've been planning it, was on the sixth, but we can do it now.
I'd like to do it now. I mean, I I have we had any negative feedback from from the community?
No, in fact, I did have one phone call and what I did was meet with the gentleman and Mr. Bauer and we reviewed his concerns and questions. And I think he left that room understanding better the the survey. So that was the only person we reached out to, had reached out to us.
I I I think we've got a great plan here, uh path forward. Uh, I think the sooner we move on, it's the better.
Yeah, I'm fine moving and and maybe it was my um misrecollection, but I I thought we were telling residents all along that we were going to approve it the second meeting in November. Um, and I haven't heard any opposition. I I just assumed that we act on it tonight unless there's a reason that we don't. Okay. So all right, is there a motion to adopt all of the recommendations uh from our truck study? We have the date that that study was complete. There we go. Thank you. Our truck study performed by McMahon and Bowman Company uh dated August twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Proposed budget, uh, further discussion?
So we adopted our proposed budget at our October, uh, our third October meeting. It's been advertised and publicly publicly available. What has happened between that time and this time is we got our twenty twenty-two audit completed and in your hands as of the last meeting. So what uh Ms. Johnson had to, Mrs. Johnson had to do was go through and make all the corrections based on what the auditors had provided to us. And and doing so, she also found some corrections, some errors, some changes that needed to occur. Your sheet on the top page of your new budget with the changes made capsulizes the highlights of that budget. How how is it, the the highlights of those changes uh which are fairly minimal, but the unfortunate part is that the proposed budget had a positive balance revenues versus expenditures of forty thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars with the changes that are now being suggested that reverts to a negative or deficit of a hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-five. I say that, but also couple the fact with that our fund balance currently is three, is projected to be three point eight two two million. So going through the um, the changes, the ones that are very, that are fairly significant are on this sheet. The first one is a real estate tax adjustment, realizing that we uh that not everyone pays their taxes and nor do they pay them on time. So that was a forty-five thousand six hundred dollar adjustment. The uh expense items that have been changed, the contracted services administration, there was an additional uh expense that we anticipate with East Pete Borough and their hourly grant, and that adds a fifteen thousand dollars to the expenses. The insurance line item also adds uh actual numbers based on our our estimates received from our insurance company, adding twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. The large item that uh kind of tipped the boat was the salaries for a patrolman. That was misstated in your proposed budget by a hundred thousand dollars. Post-retirement uh benefits for current retirees was restated to uh fifty thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight, which is is to the other direction. And the SUI taxes uh were adjusted appropriately. That was an eight thousand eight hundred dollar change. Pension to the Public Works Department changes there resulted in a negative of four thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. And equipment purchases, we neglected to include a lease payment that we had on the books and that added a fifty-five thousand seven hundred dollar expenditure for a total expenditure change of a hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty. So again, that we started with a positive forty thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. We are now suggesting a a budget adoption of a negative one forty-six, two thirty-five. In addition to that, the capital reserve also showed the similar real estate tax adjustment because some of our tax money does go to the capital reserves. That's the thirteen thousand thirty-four dollars. That's the synopsis. Now, what you see behind that doc, those documents are purple and blue highlights. Those are the individual changes to the line items, some small, some large, the large ones you we just reviewed. So what I'd like you to do is is take this back, review it, certainly give us a call or stop in and we can go over it with you. But the intent would be to adopt it on December sixth as it's being presented this evening.
So right now, we're just out of balance by about a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Correct.
On a fourteen, fourteen and a half million dollar budget?
Correct.
So that's about one percent. So uh, and we have conservatively estimated our revenues as well as conservatively estimated our expenses.
We ti, we typically do much better revenues and expenses than we do budget, yes.
Okay, so we're close. Thank you.
And I would point out that we met, the finance committee met with staff on this yesterday um and discussed it. And and staff does have some recommendations um and ideas on um holding some of the things back until we do our budget for next year, just to make sure that we're in line um moving forward. And it it doesn't make up the total difference, but it makes up a large chunk of it. So I do believe that they're aware of that. And it's also, I think, we need to be very conscious before we take on new projects. And just very conscious on how we spend the money in this next year.
Just a question, because I just did some math. The, for the real estate taxes, it was the, the original budget was two million seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
I would, that is, that is correct.
And the updated number is now two million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's a, that's a net reduction.
It's a negative, yes.
No.
Realizing that not everyone pays their tax bill.
What had happened is I didn't, I had not done the calculation that had been done by my predecessor on the amounts that is not usually paid by the end of the year. So those are the taxes that are usually paid either in the, in the next year or that end up delinquent and are paid after the fact.
Does I'm I'm not getting to one forty. I'll sit down with you afterwards. I'll, something's not adding up.
The one forty-five that you see on the front sheet
Right.
is the highlights and the and the major items. There are minimal changes as well.
If you, if you look at the actual documents, there's purple and blue highlights. The blue ones are the, are the more significant ones, the ones that were listed here. The other ones were more smaller amounts where it was, you know, like the the calculation of of um a hundred thousand dollars for the police um patrolments um payroll salaries creates a a change in what their FICA and their Medicare the township's portion of their tax taxes and also the state unemployed, or the state unemployment. So there's certain other things that are are changed. So this is not, this is not the net of the changes. This is just the more significant.
Next, when you net that, you get two hundred and eight thousand dollars. That's why. So there's, it was slowing up a lot more because I was, I did quick math in my head that those numbers weren't adding up on the front sheet.
There are other changes that were affected because of of these, but this is just significant changes.
Do we know of any variables in the Centerville Road project to date, the cost, change orders? Do we know any variables in the Centerville Road project to date, the cost, change orders?
Not that I'm aware. We don't hold the contract, so we don't see those change orders.
We're not attending their job meetings and things?
Yes, Diane is.
I thought so.
Yeah, I, I attend the project control meeting every month, um, and there are high level reviews on things. But because the finances are so split between different funding sources and then PennDOT, our township and Manor Township, we see the, the finance processes that come through in the ACMS system, but we're not in the midst of the finance process, because PennDOT doesn't finalize all of that until after the project is complete and the books are closed.
If we could, it'd be good to know of anything in advance. So, it's a major project.
Yes, but we don't, since we don't hold the contract, they go through PennDOT, not through us.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that?
I mean, in addition to your question, Ed, uh, we do have an agreement with PennDOT, which has a max in it.
Oh, okay.
So there is a cap, unless they come back to us and say they need more, then we have to address it.
Well, they're into it basically a year, and it's seems to be going well.
It is, I believe. Yes.
The major holdups are utilities, as with all of our other projects.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Next, we have our MS four quarterly update.
That's just a, an update that, uh, DMA provides to us as our MS four coordinator. Uh, they review the fact that they did some, um, illicit discharge investigations. And they are, they were concentrating their efforts on the Wetlands Restoration Project, which is fairly done, or is done, uh, finalizing that grant process. They are now working on the Nisley Road Basin Project and the Gloucester Basin. And they are working on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, MS four report. And preparing for an EPA audit that we may or may not happen. We hear that they are kind of floating around, so we are preparing ourselves. That's pretty much it.
All right, any new business? Traffic Commission Report, uh, we had Traffic Commission, uh, again, we had several residents that, uh, came to speak about the improvement at Farmingdale and Orville Road. Um, that continues to be a problem that we're, um, monitoring and trying to work through. Just making the board aware, and that was the highlight of the Traffic Commission. Public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment tonight? None. Nothing on Zoom. Okay, Managers' Report.
So playing off of the, uh, conversation that we had at the Traffic Commission meeting, I did want to give the attention to the Board of Supervisors. We, uh, did meet with our traffic engineer this morning to talk about what we can, can do to improve the, the, uh, Farmingdale and the Orville, uh, pork chop that was created. And he talked about, uh, monitoring equipment being put up and monitoring the traffic patterns that are happening out there. We feel that there, there's some problems and, and we want to see to what extent that those are occurring. He also suggested widening the interior curve. Now, the inter, widen the interior curve will require some additional right away from the Miller Farm. Which probably will additional cost. So we, we are looking at additional costs here for the, the monitoring, the right, extra wa- right away. And then we'll remove the curb and, and reinstall the curb in the new right away area.
Are we gonna reinstall the curb?
Yes.
We are.
He said he needs that to hold back the embankment of the curve. Yeah, asked him that. Now, he did, uh, mention several times during our conversation that improving that curve will increase the speed of Orville. And he had some significant concerns about it. Uh, what he feels is that they're going to approach the curve faster because it's now more open, and as they come out of the curve, uh, then continue their speed down Orville. We also talked about the stop sign at, on northbound on Farmingdale Road. Should it stay? Should it be removed? And the consensus of the staff and, and the engineers that that should stay, but that the stop bar, we should move that sign back as far, far as we can get it. Set the stop bar moves back, so that any trailers or anything moving around that outer curve onto Farmingdale from Orville will be able to make that swing. Uh, there's also a, a white line, about ten foot white line on Farmingdale, just as you approach the curve. We are having Public Works eradicate that line because it tends to make you feel like it's narrower, so that making that go away would be much better. So we're continuing to look at it, um, we're, we're moving on this, uh, working at the Google Ways changes to, to make sure that, um, so we're, we're working on it. As was noted, the Centerville Road, uh, project is moving forward, um, very well, except for utilities. The switch over between the new old bridge to the new bridge went very well, so that's progressing along. We still stand at a standstill for the Old Royce Town Road Bridge. The contractor is beyond frustration. We are scheduling a meeting with the powers that be to see what can and can't be done there in terms of delaying it or, uh, putting it on hold until at least the spring to allow time for Windstream to get in there and, and move that wire so that the pole can be removed. Farmingdale Road, we talked about that. Um, Stony Battery Trail, the T connectivity easement has been recorded. That's the final cog in this whole process. So Perry, it's questionable what he can and can't do until winter sets in, but he's gonna try. DMA will come out and stake it. We'll put that trail in and close that small shortcut area between Stony and Kaufman. Westhamfield Township is on board, and they will assist us with the removal of that blacktop roadway. The paving might have to wait. You might be able to stone it in, but the paving might have to wait till spring. We talked about the Aher and possible grants that we're going after. Stormwater projects, uh, as I mentioned, the Aher Wetlands, we're waiting for a grant reimbursement. That project is completed. The golf course and the Hark Stream and Bank Restoration Project that is, does have funding in place, we're moving forward with that. We did have a meeting with the Hark staff because part of that restoration will be on their property, between their property and the Water Authority. And they were concerned because they were interested in doing a trail system back there, so we're working together with them to get that accomplished so that we don't impact them and they don't impact us. The Dorsia Drive Stormwater Pipe, um, we now have, uh, two proposals from DMA. The MS four committee is going to be meeting to discuss those and see which direction they would like to, to head to get that storm pipe corrected because it's collapsing. We had the Public Safety Working Group meeting on the ninth. We talked about police activities, the thirty-fifth officer, the DTF costs. We also discussed the status of fire services in the township. Chief Kotmeyer wanted to make note that the, um, ladder truck that we have, had ordered early this year was, um, the ink, the cost has increased, four hundred thousand dollars. So he has saved us the, the township, that four hundred thousand, because we are committed to that, that pricing that he had gotten for us. The, we also, I mentioned that we had the, a meeting with the resident on Centerville with Mr. Bauer to talk about the truck study. That was done, and the LCATS convention was held on the thirteenth, Diane and I and Scott Russell were in attendance. And we had a nice time, good information. Did want to point out that the PSATS Convention is scheduled for April fourteenth to the seventeenth this year. I also want to embarrass Diane and read to you a email that I received about two weeks ago from Chief Kotmeyer regarding an incident that occurred in East Pete Burrow, and it was written, I read it the, the Friday evening about two weeks ago, and it, it really hit home in terms of, of what she does for the township. So I'll read it to you. This was from John Kotmeyer, the chief fire official. This afternoon, we had a significant house fire in East Pete Burrow, two families displaced. As we were addressing the fire, Diane was addressing the immediate and long-term needs of the displaced family. This included several children. I can I express to you in all my years in the fire service the value of what she provides the residents and taxpayers? She helps unravel one of the most traumatic events a family can experience and gives them direction and assistance. This is an absolute compliment to Diane for her dedication to people in need during these times, and she makes it look so easy. We are truly blessed to have her in this role and for your vision to embrace it. I for one do not express my thanks and often enough to, for what she does. I've seen firsthand the look of relief on faces of victims when she is on the scene. Based on recent conversations, I am here to say what she does is real and invaluable to many, including me. She has the best of what she does. So, kudos to Diane. Uh, this township is better for her. That concludes my report.
Well, it's always good to end on a high note. And with that, um, the only thing I'll add is we had a brief executive session prior to our meeting tonight. Um, it was from six thirty-two to, um, six forty-five, um, to discuss a legal matter. And with that, we are going to adjourn. It is eight oh one PM and we will not return. Thank you.